Well, I am pleased to call the order this meeting of our bond commission, bond committee, whatever we call it. What do you want to call them again? The bond commission?
Commission.
The bond commission and Hickory City Council. I need to apologize upfront that I will be leaving here very shortly because I'm going to be at the Hickory Housing Authority meeting starting 5:30. Ms. Miller, do I get full attendance credit or something like that?
I'll give you partial credit.
Okay, I'm getting partial attendance credit. But now I'm going to watch it, sort of watch it on the TV channel. And then I'll submit to a test, okay? Anyway, we will be heading out of here and I'll be heading out of here in a few minutes. But I think you're going to find this to be a very interesting presentation and exciting. And we just keep it really cool. Okay, Charles?
Mike, would you like to take it off? No. Well, Council, thank you very much for allowing us to be a part of this very exciting program for the city of Hickory. I'm Mike Quakes with Freezer Nichols, the program director on this project, Charles Hertcher, and Morgan McElwain are all involved in this project. All right. Let me do a battery swap. All right. The long way you adjusted. Now let's just lock that. Again, you got a song you want to sing or anything?
Indication.
If you want everybody to leave the building real quick, I'll start singing.
You can teach us some math.
Yeah, it's about the same thing.
All right, there we go. All right, well, I started with introductions. Today we have a pretty good agenda on here. We also have the bond commission, the subcommittee chairs are going to be next eight on that. We're going to discuss the project limits that we've been defining for this program. We're going to talk about the next steps. We're going to show you kind of schedule moving forward and also different touchpoints we have to engage with council, staff, the bond commission, subcommittees, chairs, vice chairs. And then we're going to go into a little bit of detail on the Riverwalk project and ask for some of your feedback on that. The, I'm sure as council notes, but also for the benefit of Lady of the New, the reporter for the city, the council passed an ordinance that formed a 42-person bond commission. Their goal was to provide input, oversight, and to be an advocate for the bond program. They formed three subcommittees, the Riverwalk, CityWalk, and Streetscapes and Gateways. We've met multiple times with the bond commission, multiple times with each of these subcommittees, the chairs, the vice chairs, and have a very good process through the system. I think as you'll see as you hear the updates, the bond commission members are very passionate about this program. They're very excited for the future of Hickory, and it's really been a pleasure to work with them on this project. Let's talk about planning for a second. And since this is Hickory, let's talk about furniture. A furniture manufacturer is an example to draw a parallel to the bond program planning that we're doing. Every year, one of your furniture manufacturers, they just don't go off into their workshop and start building furniture. They sit back, they develop an operational plan, marketing plan, they look at the markets that are out there, they come up with some parameters of what type of furniture line they're coming out with that year. What that helps do is they're setting direction, they're setting priorities for the coming year. That also gets everybody on the same page throughout the organization. They, the benefits of that is as you start to implement that plan, you simplify decision making moving forward, you help communicate the message across the organization and also outside the organization. And ultimately, it's going to, you're going to operate more efficiently and they're going to save money. To tie this back to the bond program, you know, let's use Riverwalk as an example since we're going to talk in some detail about that today. We've been working through a process, and you'll see the process of fleshing out what is that project. That's so we know to hire the right consultant. We want to make sure we hire the right consultant to design that project for all the proposed elements that that project's going to have. It's also extremely crucial that we get everybody on the same page with the direction and priorities of the program before we hire them. Otherwise, we pay them, they get to the 50% point, and nobody agrees with where they're at, and we've just wasted that money. This flow chart right through here, if we can walk you through this process, it looks more complicated than it is. We're sitting down with council, city staff, and we're getting some initial input on the program parameters. That formulates, you know, a big vision that we're then taking to the chairs and the vice chairs, and we're taking to the subcommittees, the Riverwalk, Streetscapes, Gateways, and CityWalk subcommittees. We're getting feedback from that, and you can see there's the possibility to do a loop now. If we get substantial feedback, we may need to loop back to the first box and again, get everybody in agreement. That helps formulate the second vision there as we take that to the bond commission. Bond commission, they give us feedback, and we need to loop back around again. So you see we have a very iterative process that we've been working through, trying to get everybody on the same page, set the direction, priorities. Ultimately, as we go through this multiple times, we're going to develop a program that is within your budget, within your $40 million budget, refining these concepts. Everybody will be on the same page. We're looking to identify supplemental funding opportunities to expand your budget, and we're trying to do this through a process. And to do that, I would like to ask the subcommittee chairs to give an update for each of theirs. It stopped working again. This is not our day for technology, my apologies. Now I'll start with the, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who this is.
So we actually, I did not know that we had some slides. Do you use them or not? Whichever you prefer. Well, as you can see, again, I'm Frank Young and Mike Thomas, or Chair and Good Chair. So we started our first meeting and we had a bus tour that Chuck drove us around. And we saw the site from, essentially from LR to downtown, as well as what future sites may look like. So from downtown all the way to this area. We saw the challenges. The fact is, the railroad draws a huge challenge, particularly near LR. That's going to be an issue. It's going to take a lot of money, I think, to build the CityWalk at that point. Some of the other areas are not going to be as challenging, but it is going to be a challenge. Next, what we did was we came to this room and each of us threw up ideas, you know, what would you like to see within the CityWalk? What are your favorite ideas? And we just brainstormed, and anything you could think of, anything the committee could think of, we threw up. And we had some of these, and we put them all around the room. At that point, we went back and we ranked them. I would love to see that. Who has those, by the way? Do you have those? Okay. Because honestly, I don't remember what our priority was. I remember what my favorite thing was, and I'll get on that later. The most important thing we have right now is, the fact is, the artist rendering that we have, the engineering, it came out, if we did everything on there included, it would be $27 million. And so we know that's not going to work. So as you all know, we've applied for the Tiger Grant, and Mick was just telling me we should hear about that September or October. October, he said, probably. So we're hoping to get $22 million. So if we could get that, an additional $22 million, that would be fantastic. I will say that we did, and I'm sure everybody knows this, we did get a million dollars. It was an 80/20, so 80,000, I mean 800,000 now. Tell me who that came from again?
The NCDOT.
Okay.
For Design and NCDOT.
Okay, good. So I'll tell you, if we get the Tiger Grant, I mean, this is huge. It's good for everybody else, good for the Riverwalk. Let's see what we have here.
It moves to the next subcommittee.
Oh, it does? So that's all we have? I'll tell you, we have a fantastic subcommittee, very energetic, very positive. I think we've had some good ideas. We've talked about the layout, what we're trying to vision. Obviously, the artist renderings have helped tremendously. But ultimately, we don't know what's going to pass, what's feasible, including, and we'll go back, Chuck, who did you go with to Atlanta?
Charles.
Okay, yeah. So they went to Atlanta to get the blessing from Wolf of Southern. Apparently, it's pretty hard to get a meeting there.
Very hard.
But we did, in fact, get their blessing. I think maybe even you said that it would improve security for the railroad if you have an established walkway there. Not only that, but we also got their endorsement for this Tiger Grant, which is interesting because they also were applying for a Tiger Grant. So it was pretty nice of them. We talked about, our last meeting actually, with the help of Martin McGill and Associates, we talked about additional ways to raise money through sponsorship, through adoption. What else did we say? I guess that's it.
Those two ring periods.
Yeah. Let's see here. Everybody on our committee, at least, that's what they're telling us, has written to our elected officials asking or requesting that they consider us for the Tiger Grant. And a lot of us have received feedback, which I think is promising. What else can we say, Mike?
I'm not sure there's a whole lot to add unless you go back and cover your favorite.
My favorite, my favorite part, I am into, back to the very first presentation I heard about the bond was from Mick, and he said, he used the word iconic. And I think, I think we need to stress the bridge over 127. I think it needs to be iconic, personally. And unfortunately, that costs a lot of money. There has been some conversation with some businesses around that area that maybe they would like to go in and help with that iconic bridge. But I think it needs to be something that people from around the state, maybe even from South Carolina, will look at that image and say, that's in Hickory, North Carolina. You know, people, it's essentially our entrance to downtown, it's our entrance to North Hickory. I think when you go under that bridge, you need to get the sense that this is a fantastic place to live. You know, I want a good walk on that.
I do remember, I think, the point that got the most support from the subcommittee is the general concept that there needs to be pretty good access to the CityWalk from various parts of the city, but in particular, a strong connection of the CityWalk to, one point on either side, north and south, one, north being the Zoll Block, and south being the review, community center, library, and all that, that making sure that those two places were tied back into the CityWalk in a way that knit the city together was the top vote getter in the subcommittee.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, as you can imagine, the streetscape piece has kind of been that component of this that, while it's important, it really kind of comes after a lot of this because, you know, depending on the Tiger Grant and the Riverwalk and what order we do things in, a lot of the improvements on Streetscape will be kind of a later, you know, kind of third tier, if you will, project. We're hoping that you get the Tiger Grant, therefore it frees up a little bit more funds and we can do more. I mean, I think all of us take kind of personal pride in our own neighborhoods, in our own areas, and we realize that we want to do that for our city. We want, you know, the areas of our city to kind of, that we don't own, that we don't have control over, to kind of have that air of new, fresh, inviting. And a lot of that ties back into just general appearance. And a large part of what we did in our tour around the town, which, by the way, our tour was harder than anyone else's because we covered every street in Hickory. Thank you, Brian, and he's not here to do it, but he drove us all over the place. And the AC did kind of work in a minute. But, you know, we advanced through, you know, several meetings to kind of talk about the components that were important to us. Obviously, you know, your normals, you know, sidewalks, bike lanes, lighting, general appearance. But when you get down to the nitty gritty, which we did in our last subcommittee meeting, you can kind of see here, and I think everyone's probably seen the plan, you get down into really looking at each road and kind of looking at its active use, you know, what kind of traffic volume does it have? Does it make sense to put a bike path or a walking path or a crosswalk on it? So we really kind of got a little granular in certain areas. What's the cost? Because I didn't realize, you know, that there's so many things you have to consider from water runoff, you know, as soon as you go from graded, what do you call the?
Roadside ditch.
Roadside ditch to a curbing gutter, that changes, you know, not only cost, but the complete design. And, you know, then we had to ask questions like, do you really need a bike lane down 70? You know, who's going to ride down Highway 70? Probably, I think everybody, our group was, you know, pretty unanimous in kind of understanding. You guys really presented in a way that made kind of the uninitiated in road design kind of understand it. I think there's some areas where, you know, we had some questions about, well, I really like tall foliage, I really like, you know, we got a little granular, but I think that at the end of the day, it really becomes, you know, down to what you guys think is best for a given area. One area that really got me excited was, you know, this whole idea of linking the downtown to the river, you know, is a dream, I think, of everybody here, and how do we do that? I know big dreams would be somehow to use this private spur of this railroad that someone would connect us, but the practicality of that, I think, is still an unknown quantity. But what we could do, based on some of the design ideas, was to take Olinor Road and use some traffic calming there, it has no sidewalk, that entire lane, and maybe take that down to two-lane with a divided center, and then a walking path and a bidirectional bike path, which could be incredible. Not only would it change that neighborhood, and there's neighborhoods that run all down that one side, it would also just change that whole feel of the city. We have a lot of people that, you know, don't probably even know what's over there, and I think there's a lot of potential growth, and it's on the way to the ballpark. So there's just all these symmetries there, I think, that could be really good. I guess that's kind of in a nutshell what we talked about. So thanks.
Great example of just the passion that we really enjoyed working with on this. For Riverwalk?
I'd like to take a few remarks on the Riverwalk committee. We have a 14-person committee, and they're all very enthusiastic about that aspect of our revitalization of Hickory. To me, and I think to all the committee, we look on Hickory, at Lake Hickory, as being probably the most outstanding physical asset of this area, this town, and anything that we could do to enhance the appearance of the area of the lake, where the lake and Hickory come together, and the use of the lake, and use of that area will be beneficial to all of us, also to the city. And I think the cause of our admiration, love of the city is, and the lake is probably what tells so many of the people in our committee, our subcommittee, to volunteer to be on that subcommittee. We had the bus tour of our area, of course, and we also had a walk over the area that was to be developed. And if any of you have not been out there, I think a walk over the site is an eye-opener, and you'll see how beautiful it is, and how beautiful the sights are that could be, but also the challenges in developing the area for the lake to enhance and accomplish what we're trying to do. But our engineers have developed a projected use of the city, the use of the lake, and then the hard part came when we saw the estimated cost. And of course, we had that in mind, and we realized the topography is very challenging, and we're having to arm wrestle with a lot of regulatory agencies, the Duke Power, the State Highway Commission, and the bridge designs, and also the Duke Power company, which has to enforce some of the regulations and restrictions on use of the lake, and use of the parameters of the lake. I think from the visits and also the review, that our committee would like to have a greater use of the water for development of deserts. We visualize how nice it would be to have a business, or businesses, on either side of the lake, west of the bridge, up toward, west of Highway 321 Bridge toward the road east of the dam. We'd all like to have that. We'd also like to not have to end our development at this stage at the 321 Bridge. We'd like to see it go some distance west over toward the ballpark. And we'd like to have a use of the lake, our use of the park, to be implemented and combined with the other things out there as best we can. Of course, we're going to have the Laki Project, which is going to be eye-catching. The Laki Project is going to be more accessible, though, than the area of the lake that we have to develop. But that sets a very high tone of development that we hope that we can do as well. Also, that area has tremendous opportunities because of the rotary park, through the bike paths, through the walking paths that are there now. And our committee, and I'm sure the developers and the designers share our vision, we would like to see that adjacent land be integrated with the Laki Ark, but also what we're trying to do along the riverfront and so on. We would like to see, not only there be a high vision where people have overlooks and so on, so they can admire the lake, but we'd also like to have boat access also, and help bike paths and walking paths be able to let people utilize that beautiful layout and the developments that we hope we'll be able to develop and which we're able to afford. Now, when I hear about the Tiger Grant, I'm being a little bit abhorrentious, I can't help looking my eyes toward that 22 million and think how nice it would be to spend maybe just 25% of the Riverwalk. But I know that's not legal, but I just wanted to know you that. I want you to be it. As capital can be in with the dollars so that it could be somewhere built for us. In any event, I saw the proposal here tonight about what the engineers are proposing as an alternate possibility, and I think that indicates how much the committee's involved and how much all of us are involved in hoping to get as many mileage as we can, as much mileage as we can, out of the limited actual money that we've got. And that's why I think, on behalf of the committee, I'd like to commend our engineers and the city for taking time to make a study and present alternate choices, because we have a great desire to do a good job with this project. But we also hope that we can get as much mileage as possible out of the available dollars. Mick and I had the pleasure of going on a boat trip with the guy that we got on the lake now, to take the Chamber of Members Leadership Development Committee. And we got to see the lake, of course, a very beautiful lake, but got to share the enthusiasm that group of potential future leaders, because they were very, very much enthusiastic about what might happen on Lake Hickory. It's really a pleasure to work on this project, and I think we are at the crossroads here to make intelligent decisions and get as much as we can to carry out the future development of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I take a second? This is Sheriff White, Chairman of the Bond Commission. I've sat in on pretty much all the meetings and listened to all the comments, and there've been a lot of great ideas that have been brought up. What we've realized is there's not enough money to do it all. You've heard that from several of the chairs here. Everybody realizes that we've got to be fiscally responsible and get this thing done. So what we've been preaching to our troops is, let's do a phased approach here. These are all great ideas, and let's get an order as to which ones ought to be first to get this thing kicked off. And the rest of them, let's put in a long-term plan, the ones that are viable and we think are best fit for the city. But, you know, there's some major thoroughfares we ought to focus on, 321, 70, I-40. We need to think about signage and look and feel of those things. We ought to think about more planned development, zoning, whatever, that would be phased in over time to help the look and feel of what we're trying to achieve. We need to think about getting more conceptual drawings so that we can get that out to the community and show what we can do. For instance, we got the Riverwalk, and we're going to focus on more of it here in a second. But there is a area west of 321 here that is a prime location for private investment and development that could be a public partnership. And if you paint the picture, I think we could get some investment dollars to come in and help make something really nice for our city right there. Frank and Mick were talking about something iconic. There's another iconic area, it's 321 Bridge is going to be built. You could do two of them and put Hickory on the map and people pass through town. I think that's a great idea to do that, but I know right now we need to turn our attention and focus on the Riverwalk. So I just want to say a few comments on that.
Thanks, Rick. All right, well, as you just heard from each of the subcommittee chairs, we've been working through that iterative process with them and the bond commission and staff and council. And really, here, all the projects listed on the left, with the Streetscapes and Gateways Subcommittee, the Riverwalk Subcommittee, the CityWalk Subcommittee, we've defined and had in our scope and are flushing out the details on seven different Streetscapes, five Gateways. We have a few different options we'll talk tonight on the Riverwalk from Guyner Park to US 321, and then CityWalk, we've worked with them on prioritizing Fourth Street to Lenore Ryan. Here on the right, just based on feedback like you've heard from the subcommittee tonight, we've added into our scope to start flushing out, you know, how do we make the money go further? And looking at the Riverwalk concept plan, just like you said, helping to paint the picture, to create those, that material that can help create those P3s, but that's from US 321 to LP France Stadium. And then the second piece of this is the Riverwalk-CityWalk connections. I don't think I heard that, I did hear that tonight, but it's kind of... There's another iconic area, it's 321 Bridge is gonna be built. You could do two of them and put Hickory on the map and people pass through town. I think that's a great idea to do that, but I know right now we need to turn our attention and focus on the Riverwalk. So I just wanna say a few comments on that.
Thanks, Brad.
All right, well, as you just heard from each of the subcommittee chairs, we've been working through that iterative process with them, and the Bond Commission, and staff, and council. And really, here, all the projects listed on the left, with the streetscapes and gateways subcommittee, the Riverwalk subcommittee, the Citywalk subcommittee, we've defined and had in our scope and are flushing out the details on seven different streetscapes, five gateways. We have a few different options we'll talk tonight on the Riverwalk from Geiger Park to US 321, and then Citywalk, we've worked with them on prioritizing 4th Street to Lenore Ryan. Here on the right, just based on feedback like you've heard from the subcommittee tonight, we've added into our scope to start flushing out, you know, how do we make the money go further? And looking at the Riverwalk concept plan, just like, just like you said, help them to paint the picture, to create those, that material that can help create those P3s. But that's from US 321 to LP France Stadium. And then the second piece of this is the Riverwalk-Citywalk connections. I don't think I heard that, I did hear that tonight, but it's come up several times. If we're gonna have these two different projects, the Riverwalk and Citywalk, how do you connect those together? So, one of the ones that we're looking at is the railroads spur. We call it a rails-to-trails. We're gonna see about the feasibility, can you make that connection there? If that is not feasible, the other option is using Old Lenore Road and 11th Street, just like you heard earlier, about how can we make that connection between Citywalk and Riverwalk, so you have a complete. This gives you a really good insight into our next steps. So what this table represents is it has all of our different meetings that we have planned out from now until we have the program defined. I think this is a, if you look back at the last three months or so, you see the exact same thing. We've had, that iterative process that I showed you is just obviously meeting after meeting after meeting, and trying to get that vision together. The, just to sum this up for you, in October, we'll have all projects cost, we'll have Tiger Grant information of whether we've got that or not, which that's obviously a game-changer. And then we're gonna introduce the concept of the prioritization process. How do we start to filter down into the overall program budget? In November, we're proposing to have both another council workshop, as well as subcommittee meetings, to start getting feedback on prioritizing the projects. In December, we're gonna take that feedback from the November meeting, and we wanna put together a grad program, and again, present that to the Bond Commission as well as the council, get feedback, and then using that feedback in January, early February, coming back to the Bond Commission and the council, again, to hopefully finalize that opportunity. I think as you can see, in every month, October, November, December, January, and February, there's an opportunity for us to coordinate the Bond Commission, the subcommittees, the vice chairs and chairs, the staff, council, all throughout this process. Is there any questions for myself or the subcommittee chairs before we get more in-depth into the Riverwalk project? About our process, our timeline, or...
Perhaps this will come up as, when we get closer to that February day. But we'll need, I think, before it would come, the council for approval of a final program, and we need to get it out around the community and take it on the road, let's hope to see it, take some comments. And maybe it's between that sort of January, February timeframe, but that might be a placeholder that you put in there to allow. At least, that's my opinion, not my other council members' view.
That's a great comment.
That may be a good time for me to, kind of communications plan piece of this. Shared with the city council, kind of a high-level plan. It was interesting that, as I was listening to Mary Margaret Baker on the radio show the other day, you know, she's a great supporter of what we've all been about going on. Mike asked her, you know, about the projects, and she couldn't name them. And I was like, Mary Margaret, come on, you know? I mean, and then I ran into her, like, the next morning at breakfast, and I was giving her a hard time about it. But it made me realize that even people who have been very passionate about this, a year has gone by, you know? And if they're not in these meetings, and they're not working on it like you all are, like we are, it's easy to be out of sight, out of mind. So one of the things that we've talked about doing, Brad, and your point, is having a little bit after the annual, you know, kind of annual celebration, about a year since the election, probably be, end up being more in a later November timeframe, but sometime or mid, beginning, I'm looking at Yadi, she's one actually planning it. Having some kind of a public event where we can put up all the, you know, visuals, and you all can talk to the community about what's going on. And then we've also started working with the Hickory Daily Record, and appreciate Laney being here. Laney met with Yadi and Dana just yesterday or the day before. We're looking at partnering with them to do a really nice, and I forgot to bring it, but an insert into the Hickory Daily Record that lays out, you know, all the pictures, where we are in the planning process and everything, having six, how many were you weighing? 60,000 or 30,000? I forgot the number.
Our readership?
Yeah.
Sunday is about 20,000, and our online circulation is now up to about a million a month, so it's...
Wow. So 30,000 hard copy, and then they also agreed to put it on their electronic version as well. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, that's also the work, so we recognize, you know, there's a lot more people that we need to keep in the loop of where we are and get their feedback to some of the design ideas and concepts. So sorry, Mike, I meant to tell you I needed to throw that in there. Better went.
Any other questions before I delve into Riverwalk? There is, hopefully everybody's got 11x17. There's three different Riverwalk options that I wanna walk you through. There's also a big one on the wall over there, if anyone wants to get that, if you wanna look at those. I think everybody at this point has seen the first alternative we've developed. I just wanna go ahead and run through that again and kind of show you what's different on the other alternatives. But that makes also a fresh in everybody's brain, so starting in the top right corner, that light green rectangle, that is Geiger Park, and we've overlaid the Lackey proposed site plan in that location. And then coming down from that, the dashed snake curve line, that's essentially the top of the hill. And Lake Hickory is right here, and it's, it's a very steep topography from the water surface all the way up to the top of that ridgeline. That white line represents a shared use path, that's an asphalt path that runs along the top of there. This white circle right here is the existing voice gap camp. These two different blue lines, that one there, and this blue line right here are both creeks that are out there. The gray shaded out area is the water treatment plants. US 321 is right here, and this is the bridge that they're raising significantly through there. And then I'll just talk about the proposed improvements from here on out. So starting right here, as we see, this US 321 is really a gateway between this phase of the Riverwalk project and the potential other phase of Riverwalk, as you go from 321 to LP France Stadium. The red line right from that point along the water treatment plant, and this yellow line right here are access locations. You can see the cross-section at the bottom kind of gives you a visual of what we're envisioning at this point, but it's got both automotive, pedestrian, and bicycle access at those two different locations. 12th Street is right through here, so you're getting access off 12th Street. Right here, you start your boardwalk section. This is a larger section of boardwalk where, as you're coming across 321, you have that immediate visual right there. It's got canoe launches. The two yellow shaded areas are proposed parking. The blue oval right here, previously when we presented this, we talked about the public park, and we had budgeted for several amenities that we had feedback from our different stakeholder groups. One of the comments that's come up since then, and we've denoted it as such, is there an opportunity for a P3, a public-private partnership? Could this be something like a restaurant, bar, some sort of outdoor patio, maybe there's some sort of volleyball or stage for concert venues or something as an opportunity there? Starting from that blue oval on up the rest of the way, you'll see another cross-section, the top one right here, that represents like a cantilever boardwalk. One of the reasons we have this proposed is a boardwalk type bridge structure is one of the site limitations. Right from the water's edge of Lake Hickory, back 30 feet, we're within what's called a repairing buffer zone. We've had with Deener, within that 30 feet, you're not allowed to remove any trees greater than three inches in diameter, and you're not allowed to put down anything that's impervious area, which impervious area is concrete, rooftops, wood, anything other than natural ground. They did share with us when we met with Deener that we could get a 10-foot trail exemption to do this project, but that only allows us to clear a 10-foot wide path and then two feet on either side. So we have 14-wip corridor through there to actually construct this project. We met with a couple of contractors, local contractors to Hickory. We talked to them about the challenges of this site, the steep grades, the limited 14-foot access. We talked to them about construction from a barge, construction from either end within that limited footprint. Could they get their machinery in there to do on grade excavation? The answer was no, they need at least 25 feet. So out of this meeting, we talked about making this more of a boardwalk, pier and bean type bridge structure, which obviously impacts the cost. These three different circle areas here are, we're calling them scenic overlooks. These are like bumpouts on the boardwalk themselves that, you know, turnaround points, maybe benches, areas that you can just stop and just admire the aesthetic view of Lake Hickory in those locations, turnaround. The little white dot connections here are, we proposed connections from the boardwalk to the voice gap camp, as well as from the boardwalk to the existing shared use path that's already out there. One way to talk about the cost on this is depending on whether this becomes a P3 and how that gets negotiated, the cost share there, or if you build it as a public park, that creates a swing in the cost. So I'm giving a range on this one that needs to develop somewhere between 10 and 12 and a half million dollars. And that range is really dependent on whether you develop this as a park or you have a public-private partnership in that area. Is there any questions on this original concept before I compare the differences? Yes?
I think the Lackey Park area or the Geiger Park area, you have the old trail and then the new trail. Is there going to be a way that someone can just keep riding their bike or keep running without having to kind of get off, work your way around? Is there gonna be a natural connection or a way to connect those structures?
This right through here, this yellow line, if we keep this as it is, and we already had one comment for this meeting of moving this down here, but you would have a pedestrian-bike connection along that, so if you were coming that direction, you could bring that back up and complete the circuit.
But it does, there's still a break in the circuit, I mean, if you go along the river, you know? I mean, is that difficult to do? I mean, you connect those so that you don't have to get up, go around the stairs, you know?
I'm sure that could be worked out. Any other questions on this in particular with that?
Has the subcommittee had a chance to talk about this notion, which is actually just sort of circulated up about, you call it a P3 public-private partnership?
They have not.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I mean, I think that would be important for them to discuss. That's a real interesting idea, because it gives some, it might give some, it might kick something off that could happen on the western side, number one. Number two is a way to create some activity there, which I think is really important coming down off 321. And then you're not, if you're creating something like that there, then like, as you said, you get a little cost swing, maybe it becomes not as cost significant if you were trying to develop huge, you know, open space, public area. That's, in my opinion, that's where people wanna be. They wanna be up on the river, and they wanna be able to eat there and hang out and to be able to access the water. It's great to have the walk itself, but taking it to another level of a small, something would be a fabulous idea.
The first family city coming across the bridge.
You could use, you could use whatever structure you build there to be iconic in a sense, too. I worry that the boardwalk itself would be, the scale of it just wouldn't be enough to really pop the potential. I think it's a real important thing. And as we may talk about, in coming over 321, you gotta be able to see it, and it's gotta be very busy.
There'd be need cutting over, so, I mean, private entities might be interested in saying, hey, you got a chance here that we can help, if you can help this Riverwalk to fit what you'd like it to have, which that takes a pretty quick move.
Now, Ken, I might have not said this, but as we developed the concept for the potential, the kind of the concept plan for this side, that's, we could do the same for this area as well, you know, incorporate feedback and develop that concept. Do we know what the town ring is for the Lackey Project?
Geez, Frank, the simple answer is no, we don't. It's very complicated for tax purposes for the Lackey family, and they're setting up a conservancy. So I mean, they're taking a very long-term view, which is good, but it means we've got all kinds of documents that have to be created, a nonprofit has to be set up, there's a lot to just the initial piece of it. And I'm, you know, at this point, I can't really tell, although, one of the things that's gonna push all that is, we don't wanna start moving forward aggressively with design if we, if we're not designing, if they're not designing at the same time we're designing. We've all gotta work together. Bob gets at, you know, you know, just a lot of stuff that has to happen.
Is there any water access at all to boating and canoeing, or...
We do have canoe launches on this part of the boardwalk right here. The city has a city boat launch capability here, but it's not for public, but there is a canoe launch along this boardwalk. But other than this area, from here on up, the water surface is about 10 to 12 feet below above the banks, so there's a pretty good grade separation.
So the only opportunity for that would be in that boat?
Well, and then on the Lackey side, there's also boat slips and launch, canoe launch as well. So you've kind of got a nice little blue way there where you can paddle down and get out.
Out to the restaurant down here.
And boat access to the docks as well.
Right. Okay.
All right, this is option two. So oriented the same way, I won't point out the existing features the same way. I'll start at the bottom again. Same potential connection point here between two phases. The red line and the yellow line are exactly the same as the first alternative to access for automobiles, pedestrians, and bicycles. The boardwalk is the same from here to here, it's the enlarged boardwalk, the canoe launches. We've denoted the same potential, either P3 or public park option from the blue oval. This section of the boardwalk is the same as the first alternative, and I think this goes to what I heard a minute ago, is run 321, maximizing the visibility of the boardwalk, you know, to where you can see. Once you get to this first overlook, you can see that the banks start sloping away, you probably lost visibility from this. So that was the point that we chose to then transition back 50 feet from the water's edge. That takes us out of the repairing buffer, that takes off the regulatory requirements that we not remove any, you know, trees over three inches in diameter, or put it in impervious area. So now, from a construction standpoint, we can clear a larger area. We can allow the contractors to get machinery in. At 50 feet back, you know, it's still a waterfront trail, you still have those views. You know, they'll be somewhat limited, but it is a partial boardwalk system. You move back, you've given the contractors space to do the work. Now you are up on some fairly steep terrain. We've estimated it's about eight vertical feet of fall across the 10-foot trail, so we proposed a four-foot retaining wall on the uphill side of it, and a four-foot retaining wall on the downhill side of it, which obviously contributes to the cost of this option. And then towards the Lackey Project, we transition back into that boardwalk structure, so you are integrating the boardwalk in with the Lackey Project area. This one has a cost savings. I put this one on the range of eight to 10 million, and that 2 million swing again is correlated to the public park versus a public-private partnership option.
Did you have the telephone option?
Option one was 10 to 12 and a half million. And then option two, it's about 12 million, 2 million is the option. Is there any questions on this alternative?
Well, I think that, I mean, a comment that I would have is, if you get, I get the fact that you wanna be on the edge there, and I think that's a reported proportion of the boardwalk, or the walkway itself. But you're limited to that's the width, and this is a personal opinion, I don't have a committee to decide. I think if you're doing this, it needs to be wider, 10 feet, it needs to be 12 to 15, it needs to be at a wide bicycle sign. And if you're outside that 15, it sounds like you can do that wrong.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, inside the 30 feet, it, repairing buffer's 50, but within 30 feet are restricted to 10-foot wide trail.
We wanted it free for bike and walk all the way.
Oh, so it would be even 10-foot, you think you can do bikes and walk?
We hadn't gotten any of that level of detail. We envisioned being both.
Both, okay.
But I don't think anybody said that it would be limited to 10, too. I think that's why the engineer said that, you know, that's why you can't just do it right along the edge of the river, by the part of the boardwalkway, the boardwalk, the full boardwalk. And the other part, in option number one, is cantilever, it's just still down in that same area. So I think you get the same width with your option. It's just the first option costs more, because it's so close to the water, and you gotta get the gears. to do the pier. I think the width is the same regardless of the width.
But you do have potential in option two, the 321.
You can make it even, no, what I'm saying is, in all options, I think the width is the same. It's just that, that's why you have to do the pier or a combination of cantilevers, park, walkway, and part two.
Let me interject on that one. We may have had some discommunication there. Within the repairing corridor, the exemption that Deener talked to us about will limit you to 10-foot wide impervious area. And whether it's a boardwalk or concrete rim, you've got to use the impervious area. So if we're doing it within the 30-foot bucket, we are at 10-foot wide. I know we had some conversations, that's on the edge of a shared use path, you know, that's on the lower edge of the desired shared use path, but I believe it's, I believe the existing one that's out there is a shared use right now, I think is also 10-foot, might even be 10.
So that boardwalk section is kind of bigger.
Well, it would be 10 feet through here. This section right here is more like 30-foot. This is an enlarged boardwalk section, but we're not actually having to clear any trees. That's right next to the water.
Trees are already cleared.
Is that set in stone? I mean, is this something, the easement for the repairing buffer, or is there room edge with the project for, maybe we can, for instance?
They do allow mitigation, which we've budgeted for mitigation. And this would be, at this stage, talking to Deener, they want more concrete plans before they're going to provide further input. But there is.
Where they want less concrete. More plans, less concrete.
How wide is the concrete trail part? Right now, we've cost it at 10-foot, which is what, you know, the first alternative was. And if the feedback we get is, we'll have to revise.
Might be this can bike trail up out there is 12-foot.
Oh, it is 12.
It feels like 8.
I'll need to ride a tricker.
Might need to borrow one of the scoopers out there.
All right, ready for option three? All right, option three, again, all the existing things are the same, we have the same, the access points, the red and yellow lines are the same access points, connectivity, same parking, same either park option or P3 option, the same boardwalk. And what we've done here is, right at the public-private partnership or park area, the Blue Oval, we have made a quicker transition to back to 50 feet. So we have the enlarged boardwalk and then we're making a quick transition back to 50 feet from the water's edge. So you still have at least the immediate base here off the bridge, you still have the immediate boardwalk, but then we've gone back to 50 feet from the water for, you still have the waterfront trail, you're still going to have some views, some of the obstructed similar overloads. We removed the boardwalk portion that was shown on the Lackey project as well. And all of those changes result in this option being between 7 and 9 million. Yes, sir?
You know, one thing I just thought of, what about grade? What does the student grade as far as the trail's grade?
Obviously, that's getting to some level of detail, you know, where we're at a high level, trying to plan for it. I can tell you the grade that we're worried the most about is, the grade from here down to the lake is significant. And there's about eight vertical feet of fall across the trail itself, so we're putting it.
But I think the intention is to keep it low.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Take a sharp line and run along.
From end to end, if you do the setbacks at 50, does that make it easier to pick a more level grade? I'm thinking from ADA-type access, wheelchair, that type of thing.
Well, the contours, and we don't have survey, we have some surveyors out to do survey, you know, that designers will do that when they start their design process. We've got two-foot aerial topography, which in a heavily wooded area is highly suspect, but the topography runs parallel to the water for the most part. So if you're staying about the same distance off of the water, you're going to be fairly close to the same elevation as you run that way. The biggest challenge is the vertical difference across the grade, which we're having to propose laws on that issue.
With, I have a question at the possible P3 location. Would you lose some, I guess, some view range by going this one as opposed to the second one with the boardwalk? Just meaning, would this one only, your view be towards the 321 bridge and the other one allow more view towards the lake? If you had boardwalk there instead?
Obviously hard to answer at the stage we're at, but in general, as you're moving back, I mean, if you look at this section here, if you're down here on the water versus you're back behind some trees 50 foot back, you are going to have better views on the water than you are back in the trees. But that's going to vary, you know, throughout here. There's going to be sections where you have very good views, it's sections where it's obstructed.
Really for the restaurant or for the, you know, like, would that clear any more area or are they going to have the same view regardless of what's in front of you? Because this might be a selling point for them. You're not sure?
That is hard to answer, because that's where we're at right now. Yes, sir?
Just for everybody, just a reference point, you're on after the other end of building about this. So we're talking to the committee, we'll do that. Not real far in that aspect of it or so.
And you can limb up trees and do other activities like that.
I think you can do some limb and some trees associated. And then you get up into the canopy a little quicker because of the height, but that's some of the options.
Some of it burned.
But it's, you know, like, 50 feet is a very, very long way. This, more than half the wind is about 50 feet.
And is it 50 feet? It's vertical?
I believe it's a vertical.
Little part of it.
I was agreeing with Chuck.
I personally think, in my opinion, option three is too much to cut back on the boardwalk side. So option two, probably the better towards, that's just my personal thing. And I think when we get to the west side, we'll get some private money there, we can do the boardwalk more on the water and take it up to the city.
I was thinking earlier, get that marketed out there so it's possible, like, it's involved with private enterprise. Like, see if you want loose spots.
But the city would retain the property, right? We would never, we would just lease that out and let them build a suit type thing. Because I think that's pretty good.
Any other questions on this one? I was going to have Charles kind of facilitate, give your feedback on these options next. What parts you like? Yes, sir?
Would it help if you could just do power to express themselves and how flexible they'd be on giving, on making available land to the city? Go east and west would be.
I didn't really touch upon Duke too much, so let me explain Duke. So they have a perk license that we would have to, a process we'd have to go through. And Duke's position is, they don't want this entire project in the water. You know, the cantilever boardwalk's okay, but this boardwalk section here, that's this piece, they've told us, trying to get approved, doing the entire project in the water is slim from their perk licensing standpoint. So they prefer, you know, the farther back the better from their perspective. Deener is the one that doesn't want us within the 30-foot zone, and if we are going to be there, they really want to limit our impervious area or width. Yes, sir?
I thought, I remembered, understood that Duke didn't want to get involved specifically until we presented a final project.
Yeah, they gave us.
It seems to me that having Duke's involvement at this stage would help us reach a decision about what is, what should be the family.
We've met with Duke twice, and I think trying to sum up their position, they told us everything they're going to tell us until we get further into design and can bring them plans that say, we want to do this. And they've been pretty direct, I would say, with, they will not approve the entire project in the water. They said that's highly unlikely that we would approve that, but they have given us good feelings about the pieces we do have in the water. They told us you might be able to put a little bit more in the water than what you show right now. But for the Duke perk license, I'm fairly comfortable with their position.
What kind of contingency do you have built into these numbers right here?
That's a great point. So all of these numbers are holistic numbers. We've got a contingency built into it, we've also got design built into it. And the contingency that we put into these is 30%.
Okay, well, one of the questions that you mentioned is, in option one, there's definitely elevation change, transition to get that off. So we looked at how much elevation change for this.
We did, and we estimated, we drew the line, how far it would take to make that new. And we're doing that off of aerial 250.
It would be a reasonable rate, and you'll fix the rate of elevation.
One shot.
Any other questions before we start asking for some more direct feedback on this?
I would take the building.
On the first option, I actually asked the local Hickory contractors what they thought of that, and then we also got with our construction services and estimate timeframes. We estimate between 18 months to 24 months to construct alternate one. The other one would be less time. I haven't actually sat down and put any thought into that yet until I saw the permits of this group, but, you know, I would say you're shaving off months with the reduced costs. All right, Charles?
I know I'm the last thing between you and Dylan, so I'm going to try to work through this quickly. You've heard the subcommittee chairs talk about their process of brainstorming what they liked or wanted to see in each of the projects. And we started them off with a white sugar paper, you know, nothing to react to, what do you want to see? You know, just bring away. You know, no idea was too big, no idea was too crazy or too small. And that's what we took them through that process, listed everything down, and they used the voting dots to get some consensus on what's most important. And that's helped shape the work that we're doing and getting with the skeptical plans for each of the projects. What I'd like to do with the city council members, and so the product commission folks bear with me, let's take off quickly through a similar exercise about these three options that you've seen tonight. So I'm going to ask you a few questions and ask you to respond what about, and the first question is, what features do you think are most important based on these three options that you've been presenting this evening? And we'll capture these up here. We might, depending upon how many ideas you have, the suggestions you have, give you the voting dots to go through yourself, which depends on how many ideas you all come up with. What I'd like you to do is just kind of go around and circle and give you your first idea at a time, and then we'll just keep going around until you run out of suggestions. So we clear on that. So the question is, what are the features you think are most important to include based upon the three options that you've seen this evening? For me, it would be that the boardwalk is the most iconic feature of it from the 321 bridge, where it's going to be the biggest location, that you can see the most of it from that location. And that's going to, to me, that's going to be what catches everybody's eye. This part, you know, obviously, as you get further down that site and it goes back to Booker and you can't see it, that's not as important.
Okay, so I tend to agree and disagree maybe with that. I agree with this thought that you need to have something that's iconic and visible. I disagree that, I think it would be very difficult to do that through boardwalk because I just don't think you can create enough scale and size for that boardwalk at that height, though, 321, at 50 miles an hour, to make it pop. So I would say my most important feature is whatever's going to be in blue.
Okay, great.
I think mine is access, access via by car or bus. You have people along, you know, along the river and who may access this part by.
Multimodal access. See?
Yeah, I'd say the people involved in as close to the water as possible, physically possible, whichever option. Are we talking specifically to all? Specifically about option two?
This is about any, just what's your first idea? It doesn't have to be your top, just your first idea about the features of any of these that you think is most important.
I would say, you know, the views you get from the walk, I mean, that's probably the most important.
So the views from the walkway into the lake?
The lake.
And the vistas up and down the lake?
Right.
Mr. Wilson?
I agree with him entirely, and I think that this should be along the water all the way back to the main area.
From 321 up to the giant park?
Yes, for walking and biking and what have you, like, water is so, so important. Good job.
I agree with both of them. I think to have that access for both walking, biking, whatever, all the way is so important. There's no point to hide it back here or a little bit too far back. It doesn't, it's just always important. Now, we want people to appreciate our biggest asset and that's the one.
My friends, have a second idea? We're going to keep going and running around until you all run out of suggestions.
I think, you know, I would, there's also like connecting the existing shared trail. I think that that probably, and so far, it's also, but that just, that more than doubles or contributes to Eric's experience and, and then, and by doing that also, you know, you're getting along the lake and then you're getting back here in the singing area as well.
So you get just one linear walk, you get a walk.
Yeah, you could do a loop or some kind of a loop or something. And it makes it submitted and longer. And I think you add it from time to time to close out community, play for something, you know, with some business.
Yeah, so, let's see, I would think whatever we do, we want to be wider than the shared use paths out there now. But that's problematic as you get closer to the water. Because I'm out there a lot and know that path right by the mountain, like, it feels really skinny. And I think if we're building with public money, we've got to build, build ahead and, you know, I don't want, I'm not suggesting, you know, wasting money or building 25 feet out there, but I think, you know, I think width for the walks are critical.
I think there's a certain amount of people doing it, also utilizes for basic trails for destinations like that, parks, just to rest, to, I want to make sure we have enough open space on this trail, not necessarily for resting, but just for viewing congregating.
Okay.
I have a question. Has there been any discussion on how that is to be lighted? Does it light even?
Yes. There's, it's kind of hard to determine the profile, but cross-section, there's lighting contemplated, depending upon which choice is, but if say it's the boardwalk along the rivers, I mean, the lake edge, there'll be lighting along there. If you go up the hill, the midway portion where there's the retaining wall, there'd be lighting plus potentially lighting in the retaining wall to shine down on the walkway itself. But that's, all the subcommittees talked about lighting, having similar design standards with the next city wall and ribbon wall so that it's a common theme, and that's also an inspiring spaces plan as well, I would. That's a good point. What are the restrictions?
What are the restrictions of going back into the land, like in the three areas here that you have the viewing area? Can you also cut back in and make that picnic area of some sort?
Potentially, depends, as long as, if we're outside, Mike mentioned the repairing buffer, there's two pieces to that. There's thirty feet that you can't cut the trees in. Then there's an additional twenty feet you can actually cut the tree, which have to leave a grass. Okay, well, that'd be all right. And then beyond that, you know, there's no limitation to that.
You know, I mean, every viewing area, if that was a little bit more, that it went back into the hill a little, and a grassy area.
Pocket park behind.
Pocket park, think pocket park, that's a new thing, the pocket park. Right, I was gonna say pocket park. I just, I just even, you know.
You just took it right away.
Kinda like that same thing, where if you wanna go, you've got a family that you can take those places and stop, take a picnic, relax. And I could see the other people going down there and overlook and doing the, and just to make it more than just a bike and ride. It really is, like, as I said, destination.
Destination.
A place to go and just spend the day and have all kinds of opportunities throughout.
I don't know, this might be a little bit off, but I would like the idea of connecting the city wall to the river wall for the use of Old Moore Road and taking that down to two lanes and taking advantage of the rest of that left to be able to connect it. Because I believe that financially, that's probably the cheapest piece of that is to be able to use that existing quarter that's already there. And I really like that concept.
Yeah, I'll kinda agree with that.
Agree and disagree?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the base. It's easy, sort of, you know, when you push blinders on and you're looking at this, but I think the big picture is that we've gotta be able to connect. So that's an important component.
And Old Moore Road is just the, I mean, that's the perfect, I mean, you know, at one time, Old Moore Road was as busy as 321, and now not so much at all. So this is the perfect time to reduce that down and to use of that existing structure.
The water's closed, doesn't adopt a highway on that road, and it's very dangerous to walk certain spots, or anywhere, you don't know. So I think I agree with that, thinking that this one. One question I have.
Yes, sir.
The over looks, is it kinda like scale or is this like just a dot?
It's just a dot, it's not scale.
Both scales look like a hundred foot.
Right.
Diagonal circle.
That's for the pocket parts.
They're planning some restroom facilities too.
Yeah, at the US 321 end, that was another one to vote for for Riverwalk.
What question I had before is one, you mentioned lighting, and we talked about lighting a lot, but we don't currently have the parks open at night. You can't go to the park now. Are we gonna change that? Does that mean we're gonna have, you know?
Oh, there's businesses down there.
Yeah, perfect, unless it's not, and I would like to say uplighting and stuff to really, you see it from the river and stuff, and have an accessible.
I just know that there's other consequences of that, there's law enforcement and other things that they do.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been walking through the park.
You got a restaurant there. You got a restaurant there with the bar.
Robert, it would be really hard to lock all that up, and it would be just like cutting off access for half your time. It'd be crazy.
I have one more question for you on this, and we'll split this round, and you might have already covered it. Are the features that Mark's showing that you'd like to see? I think you probably may have covered it, but it's something that we haven't talked about tonight. It's not on any of these concepts that you'd like to see.
Now, I hope I don't sound like I'm big, oh, I'm sorry. No, but, of course, but the, you know, I think we talked around it, it's that, it's that identity that you're gonna get when you come across the bridge. It's, it's gonna be memorable in people's minds. They know they've come to Hickory because they've seen that. I don't know what that is. You can't even talk about that, you know, so.
Anyone else?
I think lighting would be a big piece of that, especially at night, that that's gonna be very important to capture in people's mind. They come across that bridge and they see this.
It would be nice for those who cannot walk or are biking to ride rail from downtown to Riverwalk and River beyond.
Rail access?
He said things that were.
Oh, oh.
With rail, they'd leap that way, that's good.
Any other thoughts in any direction about any of these concepts that you like or dislike or is missing?
I like the, like, seventeen dollars.
We wanna be, we want all that.
That's kinda the next step here. If you had to pick one of these three, which one would you pick?
Number one.
How many number ones? We've got two number ones. How many number twos? Three number.
Let me give one.
Well, make up your mind, which one? Well, these aren't. And number three?
No, number two has the boardwalk both in, that's why I'm telling you that.
So you like the boardwalks both in as well?
I think it really enhances what's possible out there on that area there.
This is very, very helpful for us to be able to begin to narrow it down and refine what the cost estimates will be. And as Mike mentioned, we'll begin the process in October of looking at all this and what the priorities are. Might be to begin to narrow all the projects down and make sure we stay within your budget. So thank you for the input. Real quickly, one more quick exercise, and this has to do with Riverwalk, we're talking Riverwalk Phase Two, the other side of 321, this side of 321. It might be a little bit hard to see, but let me orient you here. This is 321 here, outside here, where we are, baseball stadium, and the river park here. We originally came in today with West Ham, where's the site? What do you see as Riverwalk Phase Two, the potential economic development on this side of 321? We started with this L-shaped piece of property. And just this afternoon, in meeting with staff, we've kind of added this area here as a, depending upon what happens, it will be a catalyst for additional development and redevelopment of the property in here. What I'd like to get is, this what you're thinking about as the area for potential development for Riverwalk Phase Two, where you would see some type of mixed-use development, where you can have maybe public-private partnership opportunities with the developer or developers. Anyone disagree with this?
No.
Who are the owners of all that property?
Various record properties, got a big chunk of it.
That, that clinic center there, that one section, like you call that.
I love this river.
That's the new. And that's a good point. This is all private property. The other property we're talking about was city-owned property. This is private property. So the game changes a little bit here, how it's approached, obviously. And our next step is, we're gonna be doing some base mapping for the site, looking at the topography, looking at the repairing buffer. We still have that repairing buffer, that's what that line represents. You've got the railroad corridor coming through here. We've got floodplains on the creeks that come from here to deal with. So we're going through and looking at the site to find out what the development, potential farce, the area that can be developed. There's roughly a drop from outfield of the baseball stadium to the river of about sixty feet, if you ever take. So it's some pretty severe topography. So I have a few questions for you, and Mike's gonna capture those comments as well. So what do you think is the greatest asset of this site? You're talking about Phase Two? Yes, sir, this site right here.
View of the lake.
View of the lake.
Let me ask you one other question.
Yes, sir.
Easternmost access along 321, is that controlled access or?
Here?
Right there. Is that controlled access?
The new bridge is gonna be kind of back up in here, Chuck.
Yes.
Eyes right there.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that's probably gonna be limited access?
Yeah.
Or no access?
Probably be no access.
No access? And just say, one of the concepts we're talking about, this bridge is supposed to be, what, twenty to a hundred feet higher than this today? You come down Old Moore Road, you come under the bridge, under the new bridge, into the site, as a possibility.
You could have, could you have kind of these apartments?
That's what we.
Grocery stores?
What do you wanna see in there?
People. Voters. Jobs.
All right, but that's one of the questions, what types of land that you'd like to see here? Are there uses in Hickory that are not in Hickory that you might like to see?
I mean, I think everybody in Hickory wants a lifestyle center. I don't know if you've got enough land there to do it, but certainly, maybe a small one.
So when you say lifestyle center, where you can live, shop, and play?
That's, that's.
Total mixed use.
Bird's bills.
Do we know that acreage is that? I do not, I'm just going, I mean, roughly.
I think the topography is, you know, could be an asset because people would let tear at that place now, where you've got a whole lot more visible.
That's a great point. So you have that, Mike? Use the topography as an advantage to tear it down so you increase the view possibilities to the lake?
What's, what county is that? Is that permanent?
Most of it. It's all two counties.
Is the stadium in Burke? Are we in Burke? I am? No wonder it's up there.
Somebody mentioned Burkeville, are there other? Lifestyle communities in other towns, either North Carolina or other states, that you've seen that create the vision that you'd like to see some version of that develop on this site?
I mean, they're out there, I mean, we do, they're.
I'm gonna show you a couple here, Charles. Charleston, okay. Charleston's out there.
But do we have a major problem with that railroad spur going over or under or through it to get to the lake?
Yes, sir, it's gonna have to be dealt with some form of fashion because it's not very far off the edge of the lake now.
Right, and it goes along with that red line.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to see, but it's kinda a harsh line. You can see it coming through here.
That thing's pretty neat. It's seventeen miles long, and it terminates into the, Danny, I think you know about this. They're, Cobble County, actually, like, six counties with the Park Service are trying to get the overmountain Hickory Trail in its entire lane. And they're gonna spend about twenty million dollars in Lenore in the next few years on their section of it. But that railroad spur goes right into that, and you could, and they're gonna connect Lenore with Morganton. So if we ever had the ability to use that, we could connect Hickory to, and all of a sudden, you're gonna have a lot of synergies where people are gonna come here, you go and ride up there, and they're gonna ride back. I mean, right now, it already happens in Georgia, they've got the Silver Bullet. Silver Comet, yeah, and people actually plan whole weeks where they just travel from town to town will be one of those destinations.
Hey, Charles, by the way, I looked up, the average baseball field is two point five acres.
One more question for you. Any suggestions on how to get the Riverwalk up to the baseball stadium? Do you have kind of a preferred path coming along and up, or work in through the development? Any preconceived ideas about that?
You got a chairlift.
Chairlift, I love that idea.
Would you use the site, the topography, as the architectural feature of it? I would think that you would wanna run it through the shops if you had shops there. And it would be, you would snake its way, so maybe it's a, you know, a San Francisco-style.
It would slow things down to kind of peel things back to being nice. An ease of life, not a straight shot.
Do you foresee the city making any infrastructure investments in this site? Roads, water, sewer, stormwater? But if the developer comes and says, we love, here's a plan we'd like to work with you all, do you foresee?
Just like anybody.
Everybody's asking that.
You know, one of the other challenges we're able to knock back is the wastewater. It's, they have two different options, and you have to, the city would have to look at their wastewater model, help the services department, which way they, which compensations can handle the growth, and look at the model for that. That's just one potential limiting factor we haven't mentioned either.
With that topography, they can make a nice waterfall.
Oh, yes, sir. And you've got two creeks to work out. Listen, I'm gonna show you a few things. What do you like about this?
View of the lake.
It's on the river.
It's on the river.
People out enjoying, I mean, that's, that's perfect.
People.
That's what we want.
Can we have it next time?
Seven, you said two years? View of the water, not two years from this. If you're the water, the people, the businesses, the whole activities of it. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
You got one, Mike?
I got it.
Next picture, what do you like about that? It is moving south.
It is very good. Where was the first?
Wilmington, Wilmington, North Carolina. Anything different than what you might have said about the first photo?
I like the first better.
That's urban living there.
Do you still like the urban living, or would you rather have restaurants?
I like the better.
This is great for the new development space.
Any other comments about this?
How wide is that walkway there?
Probably at least around fifteen feet, maybe twenty. It's kinda arch out. It looks wide.
This is kind of a narrow pass.
Who's next? Well, here's another, another development. River right here, it's not Tennessee. What do you, what do you like about that, if any, that?
A lot of buildings and people in them.
Is that what you?
No.
Nah? That's not, that's not pushing your buttons, is it?
Well, that's something.
That's not inviting out.
We don't have a body.
Does that set back the cause of the, where the river there goes up and down some?
All right, the next two slides I'm gonna show you are some slides that Freezing Diggle has developed for other clients. They're rendering mixed-use developments, or some downtown projects off to create a census space. What we're trying to, 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 to. What we're trying to, to, to get from this is, you've all asked us to develop some renderings to help you market this site to develop, to show the development potential. To show the commitment to the city for economic development in the business. So I want to get a feel of you, what you like about these series of renderings to help us as we prepare the renderings for you. So, I'm sorry, I've got one just, this is another one. Durham Bulls Stadium, the condos. Do you see that out here? Behind?
Yeah, but you've got mountains.
Maybe up on the hill where the other commission center is, maybe overlooking the ball field. But I think from the ball field out, you're looking at the scenery, you're looking at the mountain.
Here's, here's the first render. This is a downtown scene, but just imagine that street might be the boardwalk along the river on Phase Two. What do you think about that? Pretty plain. Not, not what you're looking for.
I'd go back to the first one compared to that. First one wins.
Yeah, the very first slide you showed.
That was it.
That was, my mind view, what that area would be. The very first comment, Wilmington? Yes. For me, first, I thought it'd be very. Does, does this do it for anybody?
No.
Okay. How about that one?
No.
No.
No. It's too organized.
Too organized, okay. How about that? An area of you looking down, this is just breathing up with several blocks.
Now, remember, this is just what the deliverable is. What do you want to see?
To help you market.
As the ultimate product. So this, of course, could still be on the river, you know. Yeah.
Is the type of drawl that would be used on your site?
I like that going through the center, where that's your, that's your path. You don't have, you, you've got to go through the center.
I mean, if, if it's for marketing, it needs to be something like that. You're going to have to show a developer how you're going to get 321, where people are going to park. You know, all that, that other stuff is really just for.
So a plant view looking down?
Plant, yeah, I mean, if, if it's for marketing, that's for the developer, that's the only.
Plant view, and I also heard a rendering of what it might look like, the street, that street looking toward walk. Okay, is there some, this is a question for you. What about something like that, where you've got notes and pictures of what different features might look like?
Confusing.
Confusing?
Too busy.
I mean, are we, I don't understand. We're, we're trying to, we're trying to, uh, give you ideas of what we want to see out there with regards to the deliverable. But we've got to answer the sort of first question is, what is the economic opportunity there? Because the market's going to have to drive what we do. Does that make sense? I mean, first of all, I mean, you know, we've got to be able to get cars, I mean, to that old Lenore road. Without automobiles, we, it won't develop.
I think for this one, what we're asking is, when you go, you're trying to market this, what do you want to hand out to a potential developer? So do you want to hand out something like this, that's a, you know, a concept plan that has different kinds of details in it? Do you want just a basic concept plan that just has a lot more high-level general details in it? We're going to go back to the office and, you know, take everything you guys have said and look at limitations and look at, you know, what can be developed out there. We're just trying to figure out what kind of format we need to put in to, to best serve you guys.
Yeah, so my answer to that would be, what, who, you know, what are, what are the potential users for that? What are their sizes? Is it Barnes and Noble? Would they do a location up here? There are fifteen thousand square foot box.
Right.
And that's how I would approach it. If, if it's really going to be going to, we need, we need to talk to some developers before we do this exercise.
When we get back to, this, we're going to go back and create that base map and we put all of the, the development limitations on the site. Topography, the floodplains, the crane buffer. Then we'll be able to identify where, where are the areas that can be developed on this site? How, how big are they? And then, then we'll have a better idea of whether it's Barnes and Noble scale or ice cream shops here. Well, we're just trying to get an idea from you, as, as Morgan said, the city's going to be out recruiting developers. Here's, here's a potential project. We're willing to partner with developers if it's a right opportunity. What do you want to show them? What, what type of, of drawl? Not, not specifically, but it will be done specifically for this site, but it'd just be a concept to spark their interest, to show the potential in the site.
When you speak of partnering, you make the city build the infrastructure that the developer could be attached to. Is that what you're talking about?
It could be whatever is mutually beneficial and affordable for the city and for the developer.
If the developer would come in with a great plan, well, certainly I think we would all be willing to put infrastructure in or whatever is needed to develop that. But that is, it's going to, it's going to be driven by a developer, not.
Yeah.
I think we got to.
We've got to.
This?
Yeah.
You're talking about that one that Mitchell did?
Mitchell did a while back?
Maybe, maybe we can float that out from the development community.
I see this more development, residential development.
Of course, that's all residential.
Rather than that commercial, there would be some commercial that would go with it.
But primarily residential and some commercial?
I, I think.
Well, that, you know, Burtville concept, you know, where you've got the living above and stories below.
Yeah.
These millennials, that's what they're, they're wanting.
I, I think this just kind of wraps it up. I, I, I think this has been a, a good exercise. We gave you some details on the two different potential faces of Riverwalk and where we're going. I, I think this schedule really summarizes. We're going to be talking to all of you again in October, November, December, and January. Now, just open up for any general questions anybody has.
I think back to, you know, I still see the looks on their faces of, okay, what exactly was that last thing about? In my mind, what we're trying to do is, I think all of us in this community, you know, get the potential of, of how this private development can piggyback off of the Riverwalk, off the baseball stadium, the traffic on 321. In my mind, what we're talking about is just having something that's conceptual that when you, that we can start getting out there in the development world so that A, they know that we're doing the city walk, or the Riverwalk. They know we're doing the city walk. They know we're looking at connecting together. And oh, by the way, they know that we're interested in some private partnership for more development, more commercial development piggybacking off of this. What it ends up being, the market will totally dictate that. But all we're looking for is, is kind of that calling card to give us a reason to go sit down with them and talk to them and get at least in their mindset. That's some of the conversations I've heard, is we, we all kind of have this thought internally, let's get something we can go externally, not, and we're not talking about, you know, tons of research and analysis on it, but just that very first piece of material to go sit down and say, hey, look at what we've got going on in Hickory. Come check us out.
Do we, do we know that these private entities that own this are interested in?
Well, that's a great question, Dave. I think what we do is, I think the very first thing we do is we get some of these, is we have a meeting with all the property owners and say, you know, look at what the city's doing, just in case you didn't know. You know, and are you comfortable with us talking about, you know, people potentially doing development? You know, do you want to be part of that? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would be ticked if I found out the city was out marketing my property for.
Yeah. If, if, if they're not interested in selling, it's a moot point, isn't it?
But it's the same kind of thing. It's hard to sit down and have that conversation with those folks if you can't show them a picture. You know what I mean? It's hard enough for people who do this for a living to, to understand what we're talking about.
Right.
You know, if, if you just own the property and you don't have any idea what's going on in the city or anything like that, we need something. I've heard from everybody, we need something to put in front of people so they can say, okay, yeah, I see what we're talking about. I'm in or I'm out, or you know, I want to hear more, kind of thing. Just to start that ball, you know, roll and start those conversations.
We've been asked to create essentially a pretty picture of renderings, what our potential is with this site, so that the city will have that tool to have something to talk from. Again, generates some interest in, in the development, using, leveraging the Riverwalk and its investment to do that.
Are all, are, do all the property owners, current property owners, know about everything that this plans to do? That's true, I mean, they may, it all depends on, I mean, they own the place. And all that drives everything.
I think it's very helpful to discuss this Phase Two before we make a final decision on Phase One. I think it'll help focus on Phase One and decide, you know, in a good way, what's your opinion of Phase One. Does that make any sense?
And can I interject? When I was doing the presentations a year ago and got feedback, you know, this, this area really is its own little, little downtown area, I guess. So it's, it's a second downtown. This, this, this would be, as we're talking about it here, a destination. Uh, and so people coming down the new bridge will see over to the left and they'll see the kids walking with their little belongings and they'll see people enjoying the walkway. And then over to the right, you know, you've got the Barnes and Noble and, and the coffee shops and you've got the residential. And, and if we stop there, you know, maybe we can take, uh, the, the train from that area into downtown. Maybe we can walk into downtown. You know, that's really the vision. And so I like the vision of the Durham Bulls Park with the, with the condos in the back. I mean, it's, it's not, you know, we, we don't, we don't have, Hickory doesn't have the, the financial backing to be a Burtville village, but it can be its own miniature version, in my opinion. So that's the feedback I got, just to throw it out there.
Thank you all for your input. It'll be helpful for us and we're looking forward to working through the process, the iterative process to lose the program, the progress, finalize, and get forward to designing and building something.